A little lady doing six.
Good.
And she enjoy.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so did she. She had a good time.
Oh, she, he had a ball.
Good.
He said, "Nene, it was over."
It was amazing. That's awesome.
At first, to take the date, his mom and dad would say, "Now, we're not ready for dates."
And it was like, I'm trying to go, and you have to come and go. And then three days.
What is the chorus? Did you know?
The chorus. Now, we do the invitation, invocation, pledge, and then they'll sing. We're just gonna turn our, we're gonna turn our chairs around instead of moving since we have so many chords.
So, I'm just gonna sit like this.
I know, I think I am too.
I said, "Just sit just like this," instead of finding a chair.
We're gonna call this meeting of the Columbia County School Board to order. We'll start with our mission statement. Above all else, we are committed to the creation of a safe and understanding environment for all the students and staff while providing a world-class education. As we open the meeting, we're going to, um, turn it over to Principal Jackson Lee.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Fort White Elementary. We'll have the pledge by our student president Connor James, following with the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for in, for the invocation.
Lord, we thank you for bringing everyone here tonight. We thank you for the faculty, staff, and students of the Columbia County School District and all of our support staff, our school board members, and our parents who love and care for our students. We pray that this meeting is conducted and the business is held in the order in which you see fit. Lord, continue to bless our faculty, staff, and students. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
You ain't nothing but a hound dog, crying all the time. You ain't nothing but a hound dog, crying all the time. Well, you ain't never taught a rabbit anything, you ain't no friend of mine. They said you was a hard blast, well, that was just a lie. They said you was a hard blast, well, that was just a lie. Well, you ain't never taught a rabbit anything, you ain't no friend of mine. You ain't nothing but a hound dog, crying all the time. You ain't nothing but a hound dog, crying all the time. Well, you ain't never taught a rabbit anything, you ain't no friend of mine. Maybe we're not the same color. Maybe we're not the same race. Maybe we don't have the same beliefs or live in the same kind of place. Maybe we think we're too different. Maybe that's simply not true. Maybe I also have those tendencies and maybe I share them with you, share with you, oh. We are one nation, yes, we are one land. Together in freedom, united we stand. Oh, we are one nation, yes, we are one land. Together in freedom, united we stand. Oh. We are a rainbow of people. We have our own history. We share a nation with common bonds. A nation where people are free. We know that freedom is precious. We know that cost is extreme. We share commitment and gratitude. We share our American dream, share our dream, oh. We are one nation, yes, we are one land. Together in freedom, united we stand. Oh, we are one nation, yes, we are one land. Together in freedom, united we stand. We are one nation, yes, we are one land. Together in freedom, united we stand. Oh, we are one nation, yes, we are one land. Together in freedom, united we stand. Oh. We are, we are, we are one nation. We are, we are, we are one nation. We are, we are, we are one nation, oh. One nation.
Awesome job. Let's give them another hand. Awesome. Before you leave, we want to say to our young people, thank you so much for an awesome job. And thank you, parents, for bringing them. On behalf of this board, we want to thank you, Ms. Jackson Lee, for the outstanding performance by the students. Ms. Norris, thank you for working so diligently with the young people and providing such a wonderful performance. Please share with the children how much we really enjoyed that performance. Thank you again. At this time, we want to welcome all our visitors here tonight and invite anyone who would like to come forward to, um, make a public comment on any action item. We have two action items, personnel, and approve the advertisement and set public hearing on March 11th, 2025, for the adoption of science instructional material for a five-year cycle for K-12. And this implementing of materials would be for 25, 26 school year. If not, do I hear a motion to close and adopt the agenda?
Same, second, with the addendum.
With the addendum. Thank you. We will. It has been moved and properly seconded that we close and adopt the agenda with the addendum. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, we will have a presentation from Mr. Mickey Garrett.
I'm Mickey Garrett, 998 South Marion Avenue, Lake City. I'm here as a citizen of the county. I'm here as a father of two graduates of this county. I'm here as a grandparent of at least one that I know of that will be coming in a few years when he's of age. And my presentation has two parts. Both have to do with the county and the ability to teach the students, but they're kind of a little bit different. My first part of the presentation has to do with my fear. And my fear is this county is losing the talent that it has. This county is full of dedicated, far-reaching, inventive teachers that cannot stay. They have so many things that, that they can offer our students, but there's just things that keep them from being able to give the best that they can to those individuals that we're trying to raise to take care of us, to lead our nation. Now, one of the things I wanted to bring out is that I know of, as, as a parent and also as an employee, I know of three teachers, a science teacher, a math teacher, and a special needs teacher that are no longer in this county. They're no longer in this county for a very, a varied number of reasons. Some is just stress. Some is not being able to pay their bills. Some is not being able to get along with administrative procedures and people that are led to lead them, and they're not leading. Insurance. There's just a number of things. But there's one thing that they all said, you know, "I, I can't stay." And I would bet anybody on the board and anybody in the audience would be able to tell me why. It, it's money. They don't feel respected, and I'm not faulting anybody. They just don't feel respected because of the salary that Columbia County puts up. And that's not anybody's fault. It's just the effects of what's going on. And we cannot afford, even with the loss of kids, FTE money, all types of things, we cannot afford to let this, the talent that we have leave this county for money. There's other reasons that they could leave that we, we don't have power over, but not money. There's got to be a way to find it, to keep the talent, to value our kids by valuing the people that are helping to instruct them, to guide them, to make them grow up to be good citizens. I can't find that because I don't have the power. But there are several people up here at this desk that do have the power. And they're gonna have to have some courage to say, not only for the teachers, but for the other people that work in this county. We need to pay the individuals so they can do the job that we need them to do so that our kids can be the best people that we can produce. That's a shortage that we need a lot more of. Now, the other thing that I want to talk about is why I'm up here in this position. And that's School Board Policy 2.05 subsection 10 about presentations. Presentations don't mean having a visual aid. Presentations are supposed to be special. The presentations that are supposed to be taking place in front of this board are supposed to be more positive and negative, entertaining. I filed this ability to be making a presentation to show that this procedure wasn't something that they wanted to bring up. It took 42 minutes of patience at me at the county office for someone to find the form that I had to file to be able to make this presentation. Nobody's ever seen it before. Nobody ever knew what it was. One of the things that I want to bring and stress to this board is you do not want to make people want to come and question and comment on things that are going on. And the way that you do that is you limit their ability to speak. Either by the number of items that they can bring up or the number of people that can talk about an item. If you make interchange simple and easy, you'll get true entertainment. You won't get people come up, coming up here and being in front of you, trying to embarrass you just for the help. Make it simple. Make it easy. Make it free. One county nearby decided to suspend all of their rules so that individuals could come and voice their grievances about their contract, which they voted not to pass. And that board had the courage to say, "Hey, we're gonna open it up. Come at us. Tell us what's wrong. Tell us why you're mad. Tell us what's not working." Because if we don't have the information, we came back, we cannot make the best decision. And I'm hoping that the board here has that same courage to not want to limit any kind of free interchange, interchange, interchange between the citizens of the county and the people responsible for making the procedures and rules and helping us in the whole county to do the things that we need to do for the people we need to do them with. And that's our students. That's the kids. Now, this is not really the presentation that I want to do because I changed my mind when I, after I filed. I was mad because of what was trying to be done. Because I don't think the board really wanted to do that. They, it was just a miscommunication. They thought something was going on. It wasn't. A visual aid was being used, and they thought that was a presentation. It wasn't. It was just to help the board understand information that was being presented. So, board, please, understand. I hold you in reverence. You do a job that I don't know I'd have the courage to do. But by the same token, please have the courage to let these people say what they need to say in their three minutes that they get. Don't limit them. Don't make them mad. Because if you make them mad, they're gonna come at you. And if you don't make them mad, they're gonna come and tell you the truth, and that's gonna help you make the best decisions for everybody in law. Are there any questions on this presentation?
Thank you.
I thank you for your time.
We're moving to our action items. Do I hear a motion to approve the personnel items?
Same move, Madam Chair.
Addendum. Addendum.
Yes.
And I second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the personnel items that are on the agenda as well as the addendum. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Our second action item, do I hear a motion to approve, to advertise and set a public hearing on March 11th, 2025, for adoption of science instructional materials with a five-year cycle for K-12. Implementation of materials would be for 2025, 2026 school year.
Madam Chair, I'm going to motion to approve, as you stated in, as you just announced. I'm not gonna read, um, read all that.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approved the item just been so said. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving to our consent agenda, do I hear a motion to accept the item on the consent agenda as well as the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'm going to approve the items on the consent agenda with the items on the addendum.
I second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the consent agenda as well as the addendum. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. So, at this time, we will have comments. Any comments? Citizen comments?
Dr. Delaney, I am representing Columbia Teachers Association and the teachers of Columbia County School District. And on behalf of CTA, I want to thank the members of this board that listened and truly heard what the teachers were sharing with you over the past couple of months. And not only did you hear them, but you made sure that enough money was found to at least offset the insurance increase that they saw in their, or decrease, whichever way you want to put it, the, 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 the cost of their insurance that was being taken out of their check. As I'm sure you're already aware, last night, we TA'd on them. A little bit over $200,000 that y'all found in the general fund are directed to be found. I'm gonna be honest with you. I feel like there could have been more money. It moves us from 11 to number eight. And that's not the place to be for us to build the kind of, and maintain the kind of faculty we want to have. But in the spirit of collaboration, we agreed to tentatively agree on that. I can't guarantee my teachers are gonna vote for it. Okay? But here's the thing. If they do vote for it, they're voting for it and trusting you as board members to make sure that the teachers are budgeted for. And that means in advance. They're not trying to go live in Bali. They don't want to buy a mansion on the beach. They just want to be able to take care of their families, get medical care when they need it, maybe take a vacation every once in a while. Thank you for what you've done thus far, for the first step. And please, make sure that next year, give the direction, the leadership. Make sure the teachers are budgeted for because they are your lifeline to keep Columbia County School District open. Thank you.
At this time, we'll have school board comments. Uh, we'll start with. Do we have any other citizen comment? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Laura Dykes, and I just want to bring this situation we had to your attention. So, good evening. Today, I stand before you as a concerned parent. I want to talk about a pressing issue that has invaded our schools and has had a very personal impact on my family. The issue is violence in schools. Keeping in mind that while my daughter has attended Columbia County School System since she was in tiger tots under Ms. Cavissette, she has attended Eastside from kindergarten through fifth grade. However, I put her in the online school as I feared for her safety going into the middle schools. I had heard many disturbing stories, and it was only due to the storms we had at the beginning of the school year that I was, had to place her back into public school system. She has been there one month. On February 5th, my daughter Scarlett was simply walking into the bathroom when she encountered a group of girls who were gathered, phones out, ready to capture a fight. As Scarlett turned to leave the distressing situation, she was suddenly grabbed from behind, slapped against a concrete wall, a moment of sheer terror that will forever be etched in her mind. Scarlett managed to escape that chaotic scene, but not without being pushed aside by others who wanted to join the fight. It was at this moment I realized that this is not just an isolated incident. Violence in our schools is not a rare occurrence. It is a reality that many children face every day. When I received the call from the nurse, I was told that Scarlett was okay, that she might just have a headache and could use some Tylenol. But as any parent would, I was concerned. I reached out to a dear friend, Ms. Ann Collins Cook, a retired Air Force veteran, to check on my daughter and bring her some medicine that she needed. When Ms. Ann arrived, she quickly recognized something was seriously wrong. Scarlett was pale, her eyes were unfocused, and it was clear she needed immediate medical attention. Ms. Ann whisked her off to the emerg- Ms. Ann whisked her off to the emergency room where I shortly met up with her thereafter. The doctors diagnosed her with a concussion and cervical paraspinal muscle spasm. This experience has shaken me to the core. I have found myself asking why incidents like this are happening in our schools. When I spoke with Mr. Dotson, he didn't seem very concerned and stated that Scarlett was not actually targeted, as if that made a difference. Speaking with Mr. Dotson only created more concern for the safety of my daughter. He said he would have students look at the video to try to identify the girls involved. After leaving his office, I became more determined to fix this problem. Then I called LCMS to speak with the SRR and told her that I am pressing charges. And as we were speaking, she stated that she only goes out of the office if called. Why are there no adults walking the campus during class changes? They would only need to be out there for five minutes every hour. Scarlett has been coming home telling me that she was warned about walking into the bathrooms as students may be having sex in there. She and others have said that there are multiple fights on campus daily. And when she asked her teacher about all the fights, she replied, "Welcome to LCMS." Can I finish, or am I done?
You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, so she and others have said there's multiple fights on campus daily. The teacher just made that comment, you know, "Welcome." No one had reached out to me to discuss this attack. I have called every administrator I know, and the only one that returned my call was from Mr. Hudson's office. To my knowledge, no incident report has been filled out. It was just another fight that was going to be swept under the rug. Well, not my child, not on my watch. Our children are not safe in the very place where they are meant to nurture, be nurtured, and educate them. We must understand that violence in our school is not just about physical altercations. It is about an environment we create for our children. It is about the message we send when we ignore bullying or we turn a blind eye to aggressive behavior. It is about the fear that lingers in the halls of our schools, making our children anxious about attending class or using the bathroom. We need to advocate for the change. We need to demand more from our schools, our administrators. And we, as parents, need to hold the schools accountable for the safety of our children. We must be diligent and come together to take a stand against violence in our schools. Let us ensure that every child feels safe, respected, and valued. Let us be the voices for our children so that no parent has to experience the fear and helplessness I felt that day. I just want to thank you for your time and joining me in this conversation.
Thank you for your presentation. Is this Scarlett?
Yes.
I'm so sorry that it happened to you. It should not have happened. Anyone else? If not, we will start with our school board members and I will start with Ms. Giddens, since this is home.
Yeah, thank you. As always, it's good to be home. Glad to have everybody here in my hometown of Fort White. And as most of you know, this was with elementary school here, so it's good to have everybody here. Good to see some of my great nieces and nephews performing tonight. So, Ms. Norris, I think she's already left, but her chorus is always so great. I love to hear her kids perform. So, I thank Ms. Jackson Lee. Thank you for being here. She's a staple of Fort White Elementary. Her chorus is always great. Thank you, Ms. Jackson Lee, for hosting tonight. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for being here, Ms. Dykes. Appreciate you. Ms. Dykes?
Yes. I actually teach at Eastside Elementary.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Scarlett, thank you for being here and bringing your concerns before the board. And thank you, everybody else, for being here and traveling to the south then and addressing, bringing your concerns before the board. That's it. Oh, also, we have some basketball games happening tomorrow night in Fort White and, I think, Columbia High School. District champions, Columbia High School and Fort White Indians. So, come out and support both. Girls and boys at Fort White. Columbia High School, girls, or is it just boys? Just the boys. So, make certain you take in some basketball this week because we have some great sports happening in Columbia County this week. But I'm very happy, I'm very excited about that.
Do us a cheer.
We can tell. I mean, we're in both high schools, so that's pretty... that's really awesome. That's really awesome. So, I'm very excited about that. So, yeah, so, anyway.
Thank you so much. Ms. Hudson?
Well, as always, it's good to be here. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I thought the chorus set the tempo for us tonight. We can all feel the love from the children, and that carries over, I believe. It did with me, and I'm sure it does with most of all of us. Dr. J, I appreciate your comments. Ms. Dykes, we've communicated back and forth.
I appreciate it.
And I've communicated on multiple occasions with the administration. Those conversations will continue. I want you to feel safe. I want all of our students to feel safe.
Be safe. That's important. Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Yep, as always, great to be in Fort White. Ms. Jackson Lee, Mr. Carter, thank you for having us down here. The chorus did amazing. Please tell Ms. Norris that we appreciate them. She does a great job with that program. I think it's wonderful. Mr. Garrett, thank you. Ms. Dr. Delaney, let me correct that. Thank you so much. Ms. Dykes, thank you. I actually have met your daughter at Lake City Middle School a couple of times. She seems like a very sweet kid, and we'll get some things resolved, so.
Ms. Hill?
Just to repeat much of what's already been said. Thank you, Ms. Jackson Lee, for hosting tonight. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Thank you all for the job that you're doing here at Fort White Elementary School. And, you know, Ms. Norris has already gone, but please thank her again. That was awesome. I loved the song selection. I started to say Elvis was in the house on the first song, but then the second song was even better. So, again, fantastic program. And thank you to our... Mr. Garrett for the presentation, Dr. Delaney, and Ms. Dykes. It's always good to see people in the audience and to hear from people. I'm so sorry that this has happened. I know that there will be further conversation about your concerns. Again, thank you for being here tonight. And I think the 14th is right around the corner, so Happy Valentine's Day to all of you. It's coming up quickly, so don't forget that holiday. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Superintendent Kukui?
Nice to meet you, Ms. Dykes. Ms. Duvall, I know has been helping you this week, so nice to meet you face to face. I didn't know you. I've seen you, actually, at least I didn't know it was you. So, nice to meet you. I'm glad everything went well. Thank you, Dr. J, for talking tonight. I have to say this. The first time since, really since Christmas, I drove down this road. I have to say this, I miss that road every day. It was my sanctuary, that road. But tonight, I had two special guests in the car, so they kept me busy on the way down. I want everybody to know, we try to do a good job for everyone. And it's not easy. It's not easy. There's mistakes made. But the best way to fix a mistake is to know things are mistakes, and be like that. You learn. You don't know until you're here. You don't know what's going on. And so, our job is to take care of people. I want to talk about the chorus for a minute. I've known her for a long time, been down here for 13 years. And every time she picks a song, it's kind of amazing to me how she picks one. The second song was really impressive, so I will call her tomorrow and tell her. I want to thank everybody for coming. Mr. Carter, I would say, "Good job." I know you do much, but let me in. Ms. Jackson Lee, thank you very much for letting us in. Mr. Jordan, thanks for coming over tonight. You had a busy week, but we're putting out tonight. You're going to be busy the next two nights. And to get a chance to watch some basketball, she's not kidding, there's going to be three good games the next two nights, so. Good luck. Love everybody. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Kukui. Thank you, board members. My heart song, when you were speaking to here. I am a mother and a grandmother, and those kind of things, I know, can be devastating because we always want to be that mother hen. We want to make sure our baby is safe. But that is one thing that we do that's paramount with this board and with the administration is that we realize that you can't educate a child if the child is not safe. So, I know that we will be working in those directions to ensure the safety of all our children. We do not want that to happen. And I know you, being an educator, you realize that. And to all of you who made your presentations tonight, thank you so much for your comments. We just have to continue to work together for the good of everyone. That's our desire, that is our goal. And I thank each of you for coming out. Ms. Jackson Lee, please share with the children how much we enjoyed them. I love the dancing, you know, and the movement and everything. Everybody don't have the same rhythm. We can't even imagine Mr. Hudson or Mr. Piller being up there shaking while trying to do all of that.
You'll leave, you'll want to leave.
But it was beautiful. I loved to see the children. It was wonderful. Thank you all so much. Fort White is always so kind and gracious. Thank you. And this concludes our meeting. This meeting is adjourned.